I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning again.
Marty? Got the agenda ahead of us. Is there any additions or deletions or corrections? Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Behind that, you have the minutes from last week's board meeting. Is there any corrections there?
They looked in order to me. I will move to approve the minutes.
And I'll second those, man.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve last week's board minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the first item on our agenda today is Carroll County Soil and Water Conservation District Field Days. Roger and Tom?
Yeah, I'm Roger Slater.
Tom Flanders.
Just want a little bit of your time this morning and appreciate it being done for soil and water. We know money's tight. We're not asking for money, so if front of that one, that's the case. We started three years ago with doing field days on cover crops. We had the first one, I think, in Dedham. It had a really good turnout. We had one at the same time in Litterdale. Not quite as good a turnout. We've had one over towards Arcadia to cover that. So we've done the field day thing on cover crop. One thing is, is we're not very good, and nor should we be, with the logistics of doing cover crop seeding or ownership or those types of things. So what we ended up doing, we brought retailers in and we sat them down, but we didn't get very good turnout with the retailers. So we really think the retailers is where it needs to be because they're the ones that are selling it. The agronomy people should be doing it. And so we need to kind of push that system there. We are definitely going to be doing something, but we do not want to do anything that's going to cause a panic. We do not want to do anything that's going to make people think that this thing is moving. Everybody knows what the Des Moines Water Works is doing. We don't think that's going to go away. We think, as commissioners, that our emphasis is going to have to be on water more than soil. But we also realize the differences between northern Carroll County flatlanders with tile and southern Carroll County with hills. There's two different things going on there. We've got a lot more, I don't say a lot more because you've got windrows, but we've got cattle up north, we've got a lot of chopping up north. Down south is pretty much a place where we could go to no-till and do some good things, get our waterways done and things like that. We do not have the pattern tithing or everything that's going on that you would see in Calhoun County, Sac County, northern Carroll County. The one thing that we've also did is, two years ago, we took a driving tour of all of Carroll County, north to south. And one thing we noticed is conservation has gone downhill significantly from 10 years ago. You know, people can talk about no-till, they can talk about waterways, they can talk about terraces. I think we've had more loss than gain. So in our mind, we're putting a lot of money into things that we did 15, 20 years ago that are disappearing today. We've got to get people back on board with that stuff. And it's not that they have to relearn it, but there always has to be a good reason to do it. So we think this might be an opportunity with what's going on in Des Moines, what we know we have to address, to get farmers together and try to do something constructive. We don't want to sit and wait and see what happens, I don't think, in Sac County. So I guess our thoughts now is maybe to do something in June where we have a forum, where we have maybe somebody from the supervisors, you know, maybe get somebody from the till lab, Hatfield or somebody. But get five, six people there. And the main thing is, how do we get farmers there? That's our biggest concern now is because we've had the field days, what's going to happen is we're going to see the same farmers over and over again, or our attendance is going to drop. So that's our thought. So we don't have really any other answers than that. So I guess what we're saying is, we want you to be aware of it. We don't want to cause a panic. We're not sure if we do this type of meeting, how the sponsorship should go, whether we keep doing it that way, trying to get people there. So any thoughts that you may have would be helpful. The other thing, instead of, as we go down this thing, is maybe have somebody designated from the supervisors that we can communicate with instead of the whole supervisors. Somebody we can work with and listen. It sure would be nice to get the retail side on board with this. Those people, and we can get their attention to push it, but you've got to realize, they're not making big margins on these things. That's the biggest problem. You know, it's time-consuming. It needs to be done, but from a retail end, most retailers still selling tons and pounds, you know? And the more tons and pounds they sell, you know, the more money they make on the retail side. So I don't know how we get that done. So I'm just putting a lot of questions and not too many answers. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
You got some data on that, Tom?
Yeah, just, I know up in northeast Carroll County, there, where it gets, you know, very similar to what's going on up in Calhoun and Sac County and stuff like that with the, I don't know what the name of that creek is, I'm going through there. Right now, we're working on a project up there, too, to try and get people involved, you know, to stop some of this nitrates and, you know, fertilizers and stuff like that and getting into the water. But what we're trying to do is prevent what's going on up there. I know it's a long shot. What we want to do is probably put together a meeting and, like Roger said, try and maybe see if we can get somebody from the Des Moines Water Works in or whatever, and have them explain exactly what they want, stuff like that, instead of, you know, like a dog chasing his tail, you know, everybody trying to go this way, that way. So that's what we're looking at, that way, and, you know, trying to get some other guys involved. You know, we understand, I went through the one of the meetings up there in Rockville City, and, you know, there were probably 250 people there, but I would say most of them were press, stuff like that. You know, I don't know too many people up there, but as far as farmers that were actually there, you know, sure, there was a few of them that were pretty vocal and stuff like that. But it's, it's going to be hard to trace where some of these problems are coming from if you've got a 24, 30-inch tile going through a piece of ground. And to pinpoint where all the nitrates is coming from, you know, to me, it's next to impossible. But they're going to keep pursuing it, keep pursuing it, and what we're trying to do is try and prevent it. You know, Carroll County could have been in this same deal just as easy as them three counties up there. So we're trying to prevent and trying to get a jump on things that's going on. So that's, like I said, we're trying to get a meeting put together. We want to do it in June or sometime like that, try and get a few speakers in and, you know, see if we can get something going. So hopefully, I'm doing it just happen for somebody, one of you guys, you know, be on board and stuff like that, so.
Because I think if we did a meeting, it would be wise to have a supervisor on that panel. Okay, I think that would be something good. And there's not a lot of answers on this thing, which is some of the problem, is people can't give people answers on what needs to be done. They just basically say, well, let's try everything and let's see if we can. The measurables are really tough to get back out of that, to do it. But I think if we get the right people, we could kind of give some good ideas of the direction we need to be going. But I guess I harken back to the things that, the brushy, the problems with the brushy. I think all of those things, for the most part, have been solved. In a lot of cases, with a little fallout, for sure, but for the most part, those people that ended up doing hoops and stuff, that did those things, are actually happy with what they did. And if you would ask them face-to-face if they would do it without the push, they would have said no, every one of them, I think. So any thoughts or something? I don't know how we readdress this, but that's our thinking on this thing, is that we get on board with something positive that really doesn't have anything to do with panic or anything like that. It's, if I were looking at the farming background, if you look up north with where they take off, where they take off silage, and they can do what they can do, there should be a lot of cover crops north of town. Because they're manure in those fields, they're tile fields. It's an ideal place because you take silage off early, you can get a lot of growth. Now, the people that have the cow calf would be, in my mind, a no-brainer to do the cover crop because it's really, really good feed, it does what you're supposed to do. But even the ones that don't do that, if they're taking silage off, the thing is, is they're taking off a lot of stover. And the thing is, is they're not getting a lot of organic matter back in there. But if you do the cover crops, you can actually hold the nutrients in that crop and let it die and then go the next year. So that's our thoughts.
Yeah, if you've got any questions or whatever.
There's actually more protein value in rye for cutting some rye than those corn silage. I guess one thing I would add, Roger and Tom, you know, just look at, I have personal experience here from the Buffer Initiative. And the thing to really get things started, it's not one practice, but going back to the Buffer Initiative, it takes personal contacts and you have to beat the bushes. And I think we need to start doing more of that. I mean, and it's hard at this stage of the game. I mean, with federal programs getting cut and staff, it's hard to do it, but we need to figure out a way to do it.
We just had, actually, a couple years ago, $478 a bushel, we had a guy on staff to try and promote that one. You know, how are you going to have somebody go out and try and promote CRP and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Losing money, how many hundred dollars an acre by doing it? So that didn't work at that time.
Yeah, now it's coming back.
And we just, I think we just found out that CRP rental rate is going to raise like 16% now. So, you know, that's another good thing for CRP.
I think we're turning the corner there. Land prices and cash rent and everything have been going up at a very rapid pace the past years, and that's come down or stabilized at least now. And CRP has have coming up. I know I have a tenant who's interested in looking at some CRP that wasn't interested two years ago at all.
See that, Neil, they're cutting the acres if they're going to allocate for CRP. So it's kind of, it's fast forward a little bit, you know? We can't do anything about that. But I, from our standpoint, is to get everybody talking the same message and get everybody on board, go the direction, not cause a panic. But we're kind of restricted on, and so you got, so the money's going to disappear. I think the money that's going to be spent is going to be spent on water quality, period, if fair statement. And the thing is, is I think from the, I think it's true, three weeks ago from the poll, is I think the 65% of other people in Iowa are concerned. And if you follow the editorial, this is a thing that's not going to go away. And so we, if we address it upfront and as good as we can, I think if we get Hatfield, because he knows a lot of soil till, a lot of drainage, and I guess my question is, is somebody from the Water Works, is you don't want to cause anyone's agitation. It's not the way to go, so.
But anyway, you know, we'll keep in touch. It'd be nice if you had one of you guys on board as representative and, you know, if you've got any ideas, could get ahold of one of us or whatever, and we can try to go there.
Are you interested?
Chair?
I'd be willing, I'd be willing to do it. I've got past experience.
And I've recently taken, you're actively involved in farming.
Yeah. Plus past experience.
Ideal chair.
That's right. So we'll just keep in touch. If you've got anything, get ahold of one of us.
He'd be your main contact person, but I think you'll find this board to be equally involved with it at many different levels, if at all possible.
And I guess the thing is, from Marty's standpoint, is bring us your ideas, okay?
Yeah.
I think that's the most critical thing.
I think the more stakeholders you can get involved, this involves a lot of stakeholders. I mean, this thing's a big picture. It's not just Carroll County. It's not just those three counties. It's not just Des Moines Water Works, but it's, I mean, we've got your Farm Bureau, you've got your pork producers, cattlemen, soybean association. Hubert had a, if you want a speaker, Hubert had a really good, I believe he was associated with Soybean Association at Rotary a couple weeks ago.
Roger Wolf?
No, it wasn't Roger Wolf. It was a guy that's now kind of dedicated towards this. Roger's a great speaker, too. But this is another guy that's worked through the soybean, very knowledgeable in these practices and leading-edge technologies and so on. And, you know, if you want to, if you're interested in him, you can get with Hubert or get with me, I can get you his name. But, you know, you've got, and the NRCS, you've got just all of these, the retailers, as you mentioned, you know, township officers, lots of different stakeholders to get involved with it. And I think the more that you get involved in it, the better chances you're going to have at having complete buy-in, you know? So we'd all be willing to help in that.
Yeah, I would agree with you. The retailers really have a big stake in this themselves, so they need to be involved.
And I don't have to push that button, you know? I mean, we had some people in, you know, we even tried, we're not in the business of doing the cover crops as far as the seeding and stuff like that. We can't do that. That would probably be a critical thing of getting those people involved. You know, you look at it, the one problem we ended up having early on is, is actually at a field day, more questions than answers. You know, and anytime farmers get into a thing with more questions than answers than a lot of other people, but then the thing is, is, well, they don't know where they're going, so why should we know? And I think the biggest thing you hear now is, somebody gets told what they should do and it doesn't do anything for them, you know? So I guess we get some thought, we get some ideas in there, but I think that whether it be the learning farm or soybean associations, we need to start narrowing down the things that don't do us any good. You know, we turned around two years ago with cover crops, and we made a decision not to fund any cover crops because it was dry and they wouldn't have grown, and all we would have done is set up farmers for failure. But the other thing, historically, is we find that farmers, as long as they're getting paid, Pocahontas County would be one, they're paid $48 an acre to do their cover crops and they were making $25 an acre. They'll do that all day long until you take the money away from them. So we've got to have something a little longer term. You know, I know everybody says, well, if we get cost share, we get this, we'll do it. We need to be doing it without the cost share. We need to be doing it straight up because it works and is good. So I guess that's all we do.
It's a great message, right there.
Yeah. So that's all we need. If you give us some feedback, that would be helpful, really helpful, so.
Okay. We'll keep in touch. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to the second item, is the ambulance bids. Patrick?
Good morning.
Hi, Pat. How are you doing?
Good. Now, are these the same, when I asked you Friday, are these the same two?
Three. Two new ones and then one new one.
Okay, I just didn't have the remount.
Or?
Okay. I've got, I've got that one. I think so.
The arrow.
Okay, I didn't have the arrow. Yeah.
Neither.
No, I think I've got that one. Yeah, and I've got that one. The arrow is the remount?
Yes.
Okay.
And I sent them the same specs unless anybody else. And they actually have a 2011 box sitting there. It's a wheel coach. And we ended up, we ended up 20 of those running out. Which is really hopeful. They have both the same. And when you get in, you know where everything's at.
They got it used, 2011?
Yes. Right now, they've got a lot of late model ones, every Ford GEC that they have so much trouble with. They're getting rid of them, and so they've got a lot of late model boxes. The arrow's also got a cop right now, two-year-old. They can send it back to the one they were using.
So these both are same chassis, though?
Yeah, they're Chevy GFCs. They're two. Chevy's going to U.C., but I think they're all Chivvies this year.
Well, I had a question about that, Pat, and I thought I brought it up to you a couple weeks ago, but the one from, the Lifeline one, appears to me is on a Ford chassis.
I did give you one of those at one time.
So this is from here, you just hand it off to this Chevy?
Oh, then maybe I do need that one.
I did, I picked up the all one one of them.
Thanks.
So these are all Type III and they're all Chivvies. Because I have four that I knew were Type III.
Okay. Okay.
We don't. The arrow, it's the same on the chassis. And the box, they guarantee everything, standard paint, everything there. This is a company we've worked with before. It's a Iowa company. We've got several of these remounts. These highlighting green are the new upgrades that they did. What they're doing now, issues that they had in the past.
Why are they putting that window on there?
They didn't have a window. The one that they have right now, they don't have a window on the side.
Did you cut the air ride out of it, then?
Yeah, there's no air ride on that one.
Okay.
They don't recommend air ride on the Type IIs.
Maybe it's issues?
Okay, no air ride, then?
They've got one in this air ride.
Right.
It's horrible? They've got nothing for, they have a suspension on it or anything?
What is that, I mean?
It just rides so rough.
Okay, so when Feld's just says, "Upgrade handling kit," that's just a heavy-duty transmission and not an air-ride transmission?
Right.
Perfect, thanks.
Right. Chassis, why you ride, same. And that's something new with arrow. They didn't do the heavy front suspension before, but now they are.
Did you have a chance to look into what they told us down in Manning?
Well, they're talking about new ones, new rigs. I know Bob said something about that years ago, and all he does is order chassis, and I have no idea what, what, what?
The outfit?
The outfit, yeah. I don't know what brand it is.
But they were indicating that it was a substantial savings. I mean, is that not worth looking into?
Well, when we do the new one, but for remount, this year we're doing remount, I don't think.
Okay. And we only got just one bid on the remount?
There's not a lot of people doing remounts anymore. The ones like Wheel Coach, Feld used to do remount and new, they don't do remounts. They're marketing that too much competition with the new.
So you could only get one remount bid? I mean, that's what?
The other one was live mine, and they don't have anything available until later in the summer for remount.
Are we under a time consideration that that bothers us?
When we get one, that's, we need to get off the road pretty quickly. The only other one I know around here is in Omaha. I haven't been able to get anything from them yet, but they're usually hiring with these guys, but I haven't been able to for sure.
The board typically likes more than one bid, is, you know, it's just only my count on that, and I certainly support that. I mean, it's nice to have these other two to know what a new one costs in comparison, but if we're going to compare remount for remount, I would suggest more than one bid from all opportunities. And if we've got somebody that could supply a chassis, we've got, we already know where there's a ton of boxes out.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that in itself would be another bid.
We just went through this on secondary roads where we reasonably didn't think the second bid would be any better, but it really was. We saved a few thousand dollars there.
It's the thing with going through, you end up with a chassis, you gotta get somebody that's willing to work with them to do the remount.
Remount.
Because remounts, they buy their own chassis. They've got chassis sitting there, so I don't know.
What chassis do you use? The other ones have, do they have an arrow or a different?
The chassis is a Chevy, a G45.
What's that? The box. Arrow's the box. The one that they have right now is a Wheel Coach.
Same thing that Feld is bidding, except new.
Right, yeah.
But what, the other bid, place you'd get a bid from, what?
I don't know. Just whatever they happen to have on here.
That's the only thing good about this, is that she bits in lots that she used to.
And it's a company that we've been using.
If I remember right, when we had the Dax and Arrow's, the one that came, kind of filled us out, too. Yeah, it's true. Like we...
Mm-hmm.
So what's the wishes of the board this time? Get another quote, or is it?
That's what I would recommend. I see this bid good through March 30th, so I think there'd be enough time to get another bid in before then.
Yeah, I'd rather not discuss any numbers right now. If we're going to seek other quotes out there and just find out, and, you know, do your due diligence the best you can. I mean, if they're an option, great. If not, call around. I'd be glad to help, or stay out of it. But I would like to see more bids on a remount, if that's what we're going to buy. One comment I would make about the specs in here, and of course, we just had this one presented to us, but I noticed it was on the other one, is I don't know what they're charging us for the two-tone paint, but it's got to be an additional charge. I don't see that enhancing the performance of the ambulance in any way. Plus, we've got nine other units out there, all with a single color.
Is two-tone paint on the ones we have now?
Moving one.
Well, with the blue stripe.
Two blue stripes.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, fill them in about 24 inches in between the two.
Okay, $1,600 was the price on the one.
On what one?
One of them had it broken out at $1,600.
Arrow wasn't charging nothing.
Yeah, the Lifeline, $1,600, lower two-tone paint, $1,600. I don't know what the others were, but that's, I don't know, I just think that's $1,600 that could go to better use.
I think, on that one, Feld's is 426 inches or less.
Yeah, they didn't seem to have it broken down, at least on this.
I think I got that in the remount.
Okay. Just my thoughts. Agree or disagree?
Okay, it's my understanding that we're all on board with doing the remount. So if we get no other bids, we know where we're going.
Yep, perfect.
Do that, and maybe put it back on the agenda for next Monday.
Okay. We'll have a chance to visit with the ambulance board tomorrow night, too, about it, so I'd like to hear their thoughts.
I think they'll be in there.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
If I get that, then I'll get it to you guys before next week.
That'd be great.
Okay, that'd be great.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Freedom Rock funding request. And I guess for everybody's benefit here, we'll go around and just do introductions.
Jane Myers.
Neil Bah.
Marty Danzer.
Mark Beardmore.
Dean Shetler.
Okay, Alan.
My name is Alan Reebah, and I'm going to start this, but I was here a couple weeks ago, maybe a month, and we talked about the Freedom Rock. And I realize, I understand that maybe there was some vagueness in what I presented, maybe I wasn't clear. Today, I come to you with a project specifically, with specific numbers, a specific project. And I'll hand these out.
Thank you.
Okay, as you know, and I'll repeat some of this, we're here to represent the Freedom Rock for Carroll County. And as you can see on the front of that cover, Love and Sorenson put Carroll County on there. And I know it's located east of Manning, but it's still part of Carroll County. We came today to propose is, we need landscaping. We have, we've had a few people come forward with the kiosk part, which I presented last time, but today, we're going to study just the landscaping. We've done some favors already. There's a picture here that shows what we've accomplished. And to date, this has all been paid for. What we don't have is the money to do this. And that includes, oh, maybe kind of a line here for, so people don't drive up forward. The kiosk is not on this one, is on this picture, but we need bushes, we need dirt moved, we need rock, we need plants and trees. Also, on the back page, is Danner Landscape. We had them do it because we wanted to keep it in the county. And they bid $11,971 to do this whole project. But to date, what they've done, we have, you don't have this list, but we've already paid $7,114 towards that project. So what's left is what you can see on the front page. We are here today to request forty-eight hundred and fifty dollars to complete the landscaping project. That does not include the kiosk. We have people that have stepped forward to help with that project. We still need to raise money. To date, we've raised twenty thousand dollars approximately. We need to spend thirty thousand to finish this whole thing. But today, I'm presenting to you to help us with the landscaping specifically. And if you have any questions, be sure and ask. I brought some people with me that maybe can answer some questions that I don't know the answers to. So, um, appreciate your time. Appreciate you giving us a second chance. So if you have any questions, that'll be the time.
As far as timeframe, Alan, what timeframe are you looking at trying to complete this project?
Well, we'd like to, we'd like to complete it by, by, uh, say, June. You know, as soon as spring comes, we can do some good work, plant some bushes. And I know, I know you're working on the two thousand and sixteen budget. So with that in mind, if we get this done in June, once your fiscal year July first...
July one.
Yes. We can, uh, maybe hold, hold off paying him until July first. I mean, it'd only be thirty days to him, you know. So that's not, that's probably not an issue unless, uh, well, unless you want to work on this year's budget, which I'm sure is pretty much depleted. Anyway, that's our timeframe. Uh, we have several things going on in the area in June. It'd be nice to have it decorated for that, for those events. So that's our goal. If we don't, uh, if we can't get that done, then there's always, uh, it's ongoing project. Well, I will say, we're not coming back every year for money. We don't think we need to do that. This'll be a one-time, one-time, one-shot thing, I hope, so... We could get it, you know, a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars here for upkeep. Flags, flags need replaced every year, things like that. So, uh, I did not give you, I showed you last time. I do have an account of, of our expenditures and income. I showed you that last time. It hasn't changed much. Uh, if you need to see it, I'll give you a copy of it, but I did not include it with this year deals. With that, I don't know if anybody else has anything to add?
Any other comments?
Did I miss anything?
I think you've covered it pretty good. Enough to complete the project.
Just remember, the Freedom Rock is for the county, just like Crawford County is going to be placed in Manala, their Freedom Rock, includes the whole county.
One other thing I want to stress it, uh, this is in my mind, in my opinion, but the Freedom Rock is not necessarily a hundred percent for veterans. We've got pictures on there, not, not on there, but, uh, we've got pictures of county workers, uh, policemen, nurses. I know it don't show up very good. There's one section, a couple of farmers are part of, part of Freedom. Our goal was that, say during a major war, you know, we had veterans, we had troops in other countries who took people back home to keep those people going. And that's why we included local people on that rock.
A question from the Glidden area is, uh, how does this differ like from the Merle Hay thing? They did a big renovation over at Merle Hay Cemetery there, the, um, along Highway thirty there.
Well, maybe in part to answer that question, uh, we've had people come to us. They have a specific person, Merle Hay, in mind. We've had people come to us that wanted names of the fallen on our rock. We chose not to do that because of the continuing, continuous project, uh, you might miss somebody. I'm suggesting their project is probably more for Merle Hay. I don't know details. This is a, this is include everybody in the county, hopefully. It's not detailed to one person. Nope, there's nobody from Manning on this deal.
It's not name-specific.
And when there's a price specific to their locale, this is meant to be for the whole county. I don't know how else to answer your question. I don't know all the details on that.
We have a martial account.
Yeah, right. So, good question, but I don't...
Okay, thank you.
This is probably, I mean, I shouldn't say this, but this is not something we started. This was started by Bubba, and he's got, if you've driven around, he's got rocks all over. And it's, it's nice. I mean, you can just drive around and look at them. Every one is unique to their area. We think, uh, well, with the Milwaukee Trestle down there, we think that's unique to Carroll County. The Trestle was guarded during World War Two, and, uh, of course, Milwaukee really belonged to the whole state at that time. So, and still being used today. Well, I'm going to back up here unless you have any more questions.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, thank you for coming.
We sure hope you'll consider our request this time.
Yeah, this is much more detailed than your last presentation.
And I, and I was vague, but I, I, uh, a little bit new at this, and I wanted to get everything out there. I guess my goal was to get everything out there and let you decide what you wanted. That's probably not fair to you. Now we're, we're goal-specific, so I hope that clears up a little congestion from the first time around. If you can help us up in this part, we will continue to raise money for the kiosk. Our goal is to put county literature in that kiosk, cover the whole county with the events that, so... Anyway, anybody else want to say a few words?
Chairman?
The rock represents the county very well. I mean, if you want to vote for like Sunday afternoon drive and go look at it, it's really worth seeing.
And every county in the state is going to get one, or it's over with, so it's another part of the operation.
I might add that the reason Manning has got the rock is, when we heard about this project, it was a matter of who, who contacted him first. There was no contest, nothing like that. First one with, uh, I think what it was, a thousand dollars, went down payment, got the project. So, I know that last, last month, you kind of wanted to tie it to Manning. Well, if it wouldn't be in Manning, it'd be in some other place, uh, and maybe even in Carroll. One thing we got going for us, where some of the counties don't, our rock is located along the highway, very visible from one forty-one. Some of these guys are putting their rocks in town off the main highway. So everybody that just drives by will be able to, be able to see it.
The rock even came from the county, came from Dedham.
Yeah, it came from Dedham. Pretty much early state of the county, except for the, you know, guys.
As far as doing our, uh, working on the budget, we, we're having a budget here and after this, so we won't fit into next year's budget. We'll have to amend the budget somewhere regardless. So we could even do it this year, right? We're going to have to amend this current budget probably at some point?
Yes.
Yeah, we will have to because of secondary roads.
Take it out this year as far as that goes.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make the motion and go ahead and give them the request. Take it out this year on local option sales tax.
I'll second that motion. And I'm glad you came forward with more detail.
Yeah, that's why, we didn't want to just let it die, and after reading what your comments were in, in the papers, of course, I realized it was vague. Okay, you said how much money you want to give, well, that's not, probably not a problem.
Well, the thing is, I think, you know, you and I had a couple of guys, and I've had several people approach, to be honest. You know, patriotism is probably at a high right now, with after nine eleven and, and the wars that we've been involved with, and I think we need to support this. You know, I think he made a good case. This is not just for veterans, it's also for the people back here that supported the veterans while they were overseas, so that's my case on it.
I guess my comment is with the Home Base Iowa Initiative going right now, this is a prime example of, of people working together to promote that. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys. Glad you came back.
Your statement, if you want.
Any discussion on how we're going to fund that?
Gene said local option sales tax is what he's...
I missed that.
He thought Ziva might have done me.
Yeah, we do...
This is a little different than the Carter, like you said, Mark.
A lot.
You're doing a good job, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark asked how we were going to fund this. Gene, you'd mentioned local option sales tax. Was that part of your motion?
Yeah, I said that it's part of the motion.
Yes, you did.
Okay, thanks, Alan. Very good. That's how I understood it. Very good.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Just wanted to clarify that, or make sure it was the way I thought it heard it.
Larry grabbed a coat off you.
It's nice enough that you might forget it today.
I'm not halfway home, man.
At the end of the week, you won't need it.
I hope, I hope you're right.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go down to the fourth item, is to approve the plat, and that's in your packet. It's in section eight of Sheridan Township, it's a five-acre parcel.
I will move that we approve the plat.
Yeah, sure. I'll second that.
Okay. We're going to build a home up there, yes.
Okay, we've got our motion.
We're moving on the southern part of the county and moving to the north part.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that area. Any other questions or comments regarding the plat? If there are none, we're in order to approve the plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Got to be a house there. Oh, my gosh, I should call it.
Actually, Dave's not here yet.
He'll be here after ten.
Okay, so we go down to the payables, number eight item?
I had, uh, one question on conservation as far as the plasma cutter.
They're expansive.
And so I emailed Jason this morning, and he said it was in their budget, so.
I had a lot of it too.
It's a pretty handy device. It's one of my dream tools, I guess. I'd like to have one too, but, um, I think having it, I think they could probably use it for some other things, like for secondary roads upon occasion too.
I think Secondary Roads has one.
Huh?
I'm pretty sure Secondary Roads has one.
Maybe they should have been using theirs then, I don't know. There's, there's a point here where I think there could be some better sharing of tools, and I understand it's in Canadian and all that, but...
This is a bill I got submitted from General Assistance. Um, I didn't put it in there because I thought you guys should see it before we decided what we were going to do with it.
Courtney brought this up to me on Friday, and, um, I think it sets kind of a hazardous precedent. I, I, although I don't know if it's appropriate to deny it, um, you know, none of us had a chance to see if she, you know, needed a new desk, because she doesn't spend very much money over there, so I'm, I'm not questioning her judgment any, but I'm questioning how she did this, how she procured it. She procured this from a private source, used, thus saving us money, you know, that's great, but paid for it out of her own pocket and then is seeking reimbursement to that. And I just see a lot of hazards with that practice. A lot of unintended...
You know, I did visit with Rosie Friday. Uh, this was not part of the conversation at all.
Because I didn't get to her. When I seen the email, it was way too, you know, I was busy over there.
I didn't get her email till the afternoon, actually. And I responded, and it was like, uh, quarter after four when I had time to get over there. But it didn't have anything to do with this.
Well, I see what you're saying, Mark. But we've seen a higher-priced desk for by, uh...
I concur one thousand percent.
I guess my goal was obviously maybe we could say that we don't want it handled this way in the future. You know, maybe to educate people more, or at least...
And, and you know, there might have been an opportunity where she had the time to do it, or...
I'm just looking at it, how the state auditors are going to look at it.
Yeah, that's kind of what I think Mark would...
Yeah, every, every claim we pay an employee, they look at, and they're going to look at that, and I know they're going to be asking about it because it's a handwritten...
Yeah, it would have been better if she came to the board first.
Yeah, or the county wrote the check to the person.
Yeah, right.
Wouldn't have been a question.
Yep, yep. It could have been any better.
If she would have brought something in for that individual, we could pay the individual.
That would have cleaned it up a lot. You wouldn't have a conflict issue there.
Just state that. People need to do it that way. It wouldn't be an issue at all.
Yeah, if they want to go out and buy used desks, that's fine with us.
Yeah, I don't argue that.
And maybe what you do is send an email to all the partners, just say this, and explain to Rosie. We have a problem buying used desks, but it would be a question. Do you want to ask her to clean them?
To approve it?
Not, not necessarily. I think next claim run would be appropriate.
And just send her an email in the meantime?
Will the auditor ask for a cancel check or anything?
Or a receipt from the seller?
Well, we have a signed receipt, but, uh...
Yeah, I, they will probably look at the cancel check, for sure. And we get the, we don't get the paper copy, we get a scanned copy, so they're all filed in the treasurer's office, so...
No, when she paid for it.
Her cancel check.
Her cancel check.
Well, I know just because we do payroll that she has no checking account, so...
She paid in cash?
I don't know.
Interesting.
Because we had an issue with, um, she gets a paper paycheck, and we all looked to her, and she didn't get it. And I said, you need to sign up for direct deposit. This isn't, you know, we like everybody to do that because and she said, I don't have an account. And I said, okay, you can keep me on the check, so...
I understand where you're going with this, you know, discrepancy and...
Yes.
Cost.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't question her one bit, but...
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the question that an auditor would ask.
Yep.
Okay, all right, no, I, I'm, okay, wait, another paper you ought to, uh, as well. Another one that caught my eye on the thing was the sixty-nine, sixty-five to Rolling Hills, it was state payment program. And, uh, as I understand this, this is federal money that has been given to the county, and we are redistributing it, redispersing it to the region, so it's a pass-through. It caught my eye right away. Why are we paying more money to Rolling Hills? And, um, I got the answer.
Yeah, we got, we got the check from the state last week.
Yeah, I, I see on the, on the billing watch I pulled, on March sixth, you got the check from the state, so, yeah, I...
Sorry, but back on that, why don't you at least ask, document where you've asked for a copy of the cancel check? And at least we can show the...
Cover, basically.
Auditors that we've at least asked for one. Good idea, Mark.
Yep.
And I agree with, like, Dean, I wouldn't question her.
No, I don't question her.
But the auditor will.
Yeah.
So we're being a bit proactive here.
I did see, uh, some of our publishing and gerberate approach. The paper down southwest about their cost.
Um, from what I can tell, they're doing everything, uh...
Yeah, I see an honor budget, and they're quite a bit higher again, too. Let me check what I said.
Yeah, there's, there's stipulations as to how big the type has to be. I think it's eight point eight.
So nothing on cost, though?
Yeah, and you know, it's always been the smaller papers going in more, and I think their costs are more because they were print, and I think they sent out their papers to print. I think that's the answer I got the last time we asked about it. Because this isn't new. It's, if we look back, they're always more than they have been.
They were a little bit in line this time.
Yeah, but still.
I don't know if they're going to take a phone call, or maybe, I don't know. I don't know if they're going to take a phone call, or maybe, I don't know.
Need a motion for that?
There are no other questions as far as claims or payables? Need a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the payables.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the payables. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, with that, we go down to the number nine item on the agenda, is the Manor Management Annual Updates. We have one today, and it's Jim Helber in section 18, Road for Sale Township, and there are no changes in that Manor Management Plan. Okay, set that down to Courtney. Okay, that, we want to go down to, we've got a little bit of time, go down to the broker RFP discussion. Everyone will wait with that.
I don't know if we'll cover it in 10 minutes. I mean, we can start, if you care to. Courtney had put it out there with the auditors affiliate, you know, who all, if anybody has any experience with these two companies. And she received some feedback from Dallas, and, oh, Courtney, help me.
Floyd, I think?
Black Hawk.
Yeah, Floyd. Yeah. Well, she received feedback from two other auditors, in Floyd County and in, I'll start with that.
Dallas.
Dallas County. Yeah.
You're talking about if we asked if they had...
Any experience with the brokers.
Yes.
Yeah, and then I'll get into the sample RFPs in just a moment. I told you it was going to be a while, take a long-winded discussion here. Just a couple of excerpts from this response that she had, very lengthy response from the one, but she was very helpful, and I'm sure she's eyeball-deep in her budget, too. But she said, quote, "What I can tell you is that when we switched from a self-funded plan to a partially self-funded plan in 2012, we saved a lot of money." Of course, we're completely self-funded right now, but they, once again, when they switch from a self-funded plan to a partially self-funded plan, they saved a lot of money. The partially self-funded plan is a bit of a hassle, and causes a little bit more work in their office, because what they do with a self-funded plan is they buy the high deductible plan, similar to what we looked into, I believe, just last year. Time flies.
Yeah.
Where you buy the high deductible plan, and then you contract with a third-party provider to buy that down, to where it's seamless for the employee. Part of the hassle is only, you know, a little bit of administration, because you're writing two checks every month. But once it's down, it's down. There's some confusion amongst the employees, because once an employee has a service provided, they get this EOB from the primary, and the EOB shows this huge deductible and this huge expense, and they kind of get alarmed at first. And then, you know, a couple weeks later, the second one will come in from the third-party provider and say, "All right, here's what we're covering, and now you're just out what you originally planned." So, but there's a lot of calls back to the auditor's office saying, "What's up with this?" And so, there's part of that concern. There was a comment here about how they had used a local agent, that it was, you know, one of the supervisors felt that they should use a local agent, and they went to that plan. However, that local agent lost its affinity with that third-party administrator, and had to make a switch, kind of right in between of the process. And then it just said, quote, she goes, "No offense to our local agent, but I don't think it's necessary for a larger plan, they have 107 insured, so slightly less than what we do, to use a local agent, because it just creates an unnecessary layer of communication." What she doesn't say, and I'm not going to self-interpret, but my concern would be an unnecessary layer of cost. But, you know, again, I haven't talked to any local agents to see if they can be competitive with these two providers, but I intend to make a few phone calls today, this week, to see if, you know, there's any interest. Another quick comments here, from one of the other feedbacks she had, was about the only chance you can lower your cost, and I think the board pretty well understands this, is your claims are your claims. And because your premiums and rates are based off claims experience, you can't change your claims in as much unless it's a long-term solution, such as wellness plans and education and things like that. But short-term reductions come through your administrative costs. And that's where a broker can add the most benefit, is, you know, by finding efficiencies and economies in the administrative costs. He says, quote, "Since network discounts are a percentage of claims that results in a larger, bigger savings to the plan, that reduces administrative expenses, since those are typically only a few percent of overall plan expenses." Okay? So, they, you know, both seem to have pretty good feedback on one of the brokers, which, you know, we'll talk about here, but we'll just segue over to the RFPs. Courtney had sent out these RFPs to me earlier in the week, and I received the sample from Blackhawk first, and then got the, you know, the second one from the actual provider themselves. And I had kind of told Courtney, I thought they were rather wordy, is kind of my overall belief on them. Now, perhaps some legal advice might tell us they need to be wordy, or something like that. But Courtney, I'm going to kind of apologize here in front of the fellows a little bit, because this first one that I thought was encompassing more services than what I had in mind, is really fairly basic upon my secondary review. We're not getting a whole lot of HR services. You know, I would just look for somebody to bid our, you know, keep it simple, you know, one line, RFP, bid us, you know, bid our health insurance and let us know how much it's going to cost, without all this background checking and things like that. But I can see where some of that is possibly necessary. But I kind of think that I have a little bit in favor with the Blackhawk one, now upon its, I had a much better chance to review it over the weekend, and, but I'd love to still pare it down in terms of some of these requirements in Article VII. I just don't see where a lot of it's really necessary. Blackhawk County, I found, is substantially different than Carroll County, but I did not find where there's a whole lot of difference in, you know, what the RFP should be, you know, asking for. And I wonder why they are requiring, under Article III, liability insurance under the broker. I never thought of that, or, you know, exactly why that would be necessary. But perhaps...
There's liability with workers' health insurance.
Yeah, basically like a bond.
Yeah. Certainly, I hadn't thought about it.
No, I hadn't either, but I understood that when I read it.
I definitely get the errors and omissions.
Yeah.
But I'm not so sure about the workers' comp, but they say it's state statutory, so.
Okay.
And I kind of question too, because I can see the point of putting some of the stuff in there. If they're a contractor or ours, we want to make sure they got insurance, so they don't, if something happens, they don't come back on us.
Well, and, I mean, there's just some of these things I just kind of picked out that is so, I don't know, I mean, it's open for spin. I mean, when you're looking for, the frequency of fee increases from your firm, I mean, I know how I'd answer that. I'd answer that on the low end. I mean, I wouldn't cite a 23 percent increase for one of my clients two years ago, you know, like we faced. You know, I'd cite the one that was 3 percent.
You know, you bring it up to 23 percent. I was talking to Harrison County Supervisor the other day, and their insurance rates, because of two incidents, went up 49 percent.
Oh, in one year?
In one year.
Wow.
Wow.
Just had that discussion Friday.
How did they go explaining that?
So there's a lot of variables there.
Well, I was reading the Blackhawk County one. It's read more to me like they were going to monitor and detail and study and give us all this information about what our plan is doing. It, like, where does it specifically say we were, take your program out for bids? It doesn't really say that in there, that I saw.
Right. Not clearly enough.
It doesn't really say, and we will, you know, try to rebid your coverage with different insurance companies. I can't read that in there. And it's more of a general of monitoring and providing administrative assistance and all this type of thing.
Item F says that we're going to negotiate with carriers and obtain adjustments when appropriate. But that was about as close as I found in it.
Yeah, and I think that specifically what we want to have in our RFP is we specifically want you to rebid our insurance with different carriers.
Put it out for quote.
Put it out for quote. That's your charge. I think we should specifically make that clear as our charge.
And I know we're bumping up against 10 o'clock.
Sure.
But when we get a chance to reconvene on this, then we also had one of the brokers contact us and cited that, you know, really, is an RFP truly even necessary? Why can't we just have a couple of proposals made to us, back-to-back, next Monday, and decide which one we want to go with, if we want to go with that at all? So, is an RFP even truly necessary? So, we're 10 of ones.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just continue this discussion. It's 10 o'clock. We'll open the public hearing for the fiscal '16 county budget. Sure did.
Basically, the charts are just for your information, just so you can see where the money is being spent and being taken in. On the last page, I did just do a breakdown of the tax levy rates for fiscal '16, for '15. I'll go through those, and just let me get an idea of where we're at, for '16 versus '15. Tax levy rates by plan, general basic, for fiscal '16, three and a half, which is the max, same in fiscal '15, that levy, in '16, will generate $4,411,724 worth of property taxes. Our supplemental levy, general supplemental for fiscal '16, will be $0.25275. It'll generate $417,273. And we're not going to have a mental health levy for fiscal '16. We do not have one in fiscal '15. Rural Services levy for fiscal '16, $3.00358, will generate $1,865,185. So, the overall county-wide levy, $3.83104, will generate approximately $4.848,997. That's up about 4 percent. County-wide rural levy, $6.83462, will generate about $6,994,482. So, the county-wide, I said about 4 percent. So, some of the big things that I saw, as far as expenditures differing between the two years, is we had the ICP payment in Service Area Six, so that lowered that quite a bit. And this will be the first year in '16 that we'll get some tip financing from that, estimated to be about $42,500 in revenue, which will automatically go to payback local option for their loan. There's a pretty significant increase in capital projects due to the Stock Rail Trail at Swan Lake in fiscal '16. So, overall, there's about a 2 percent rural levy increase and about a 4 percent county-wide increase. That's about all I have, in case there's any questions.
And as far as the expenditures for this coming year, you're looking at about $16,455. And then the revenue coming in will be, what was it?
Seventeen five?
Seventeen. No, revenue would be $17,504 and 293. So, about $17,000 coming in.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Virginia, do you have a comment?
Well, your levy is down, but you actually don't raise more taxes than you did in the previous two years, if you look on the sheet that's in the paper.
That's correct.
So, somebody ought to be paying more taxes. The valuation is mighty important, along with the levy. I'm not real happy about wages. You didn't consider the inflation rate, you didn't consider COLA, you didn't consider GP, which is not that high. You didn't put in benefits that go with that, so they did the wages so richly, very well.
Virginia, I would partially concur, but partially suggest that when overall taxation increases, at first blush, most people would have your view. However, upon a closer examination, our charge as a county, and leadership as this county, is to increase at least the taxable base at first, and then the levy goes in there based on our needs. And perhaps increasing more taxes is not a bad thing, unless it impacts the individual taxpayers as an increase, which in this year's case, it does, which is why I've had, you know, my prior comments made. But overall, increasing taxable valuation, and then increasing property taxes in themselves, is not necessarily a bad thing.
I certainly have some comments. Through the whole budget process, I just want to be thankful I'm working with such a great board. I know none of us got exactly what we wanted. We bickered over a lot of things, that each of them being little things, but they all add up, and we made a lot of progress in a lot of areas. And I could name a dozen or half a dozen of them. Two things I want to mention that were big, big items financially. One is our work with reserves. Over the past four years, just working with the reserves has saved our taxpayers a million dollars. Another thing is the total cohesion of this board working butt-to-butt against DHS, trying to get the right language in our 20AD, so that we could use our mental health reserves, as we are this year, as opposed to giving it all to the region. And that wouldn't have been possible if this whole board hadn't worked together, and we achieved that. And the results are very plain. In the previous five years, fiscal year '11 through '15, no county in Iowa lowered taxes more than Carroll County. We were first in the state in five years, and I've got those figures right here. And so I think that's something that we should be quite proud of. And up until last year, in fact, last year, the levy rate, we were 97th in the state out of 99 counties. There were only two counties that had a lower levy rate than Carroll County. So, yes, we had an increase this year of about $400,000, and I didn't like it. But when you look at the total picture, and also realize that Carroll County is debt-free, we're very sound financially... we're very sound financially, I think we should be quite happy with where we are. And in addition to that, I want to say it's not all about money. Money is very important. It's also about the county. We've got quality life to be concerned about. We've not dropped any major services. This is a nice, safe place to live. So those things need to be considered too. So no, I hate it to raise taxes too, and it is happening this year. But overall, I think this board is great to work with and our track record speaks very well for ourselves, I think.
You do have a lot of reserves, but it was actually overtaxed for how many years?
We recognize that.
And the reserves are so great that you're playing banker and you're borrowing or loaning money out.
Well, yes and no. There's times that we've had departments that have done good jobs of operating their budgets and return those back into the trade to reserve. And I will control what Neil just said. This has probably been a good, we've done a good job the last few years. When we started this, we knew, particularly with the mental health, there's going to be a day of reckoning. We've done a good job through this time frame, so I feel not ashamed in one bit about it. Yeah, I don't like it going up either, but.
And if you look at that second page, all the pluses. That's scary when you're looking at what's going to happen in the future.
But Virginia, is that the case in everything you look at today?
Yeah, but you know that the productivity formula is going to go down. Just lots of things are going to happen that's been predicted by the economists.
I guess as I look forward in this whole thing, I'd like to commend everybody for the good job that they've done in putting this together. But I look down the road as federal and state's spending continues to decrease, we are going to be on the hook and we are going to have to learn how to support ourselves. So like Gene said, the day of reckoning has come, and we haven't scratched the surface here yet.
I'll correct one thing. I believe I said 400,000. Our increase was actually just under 300,000.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, and I think one thing we're very fortunate with the county we're in, we could be in some of these counties that ain't as fortunate as we are. You don't have to go very far for that.
Well, I'd have to say that for my first budget, it was great working with this board. They were very helpful, made me understand the budget and my duties as a supervisor. So I thank the board for that, and I learned a lot. So going forward, it'll definitely help me.
And I definitely want to thank Courtney, who understands that you've done excellent, how to put stuff together, so as usual.
And we all met with every department head more than once. We looked at every line on every budget. And just like among those boards, some of our department heads didn't totally agree with some of our philosophies, but they all were very professional and very cooperative, and I appreciate that. The universe doesn't always revolve around me or us, but it is always handled respectfully.
My comments would only be just a repeat of past. So I'll let it go with that. I'm not going to end support of this one, and I know that could disappoint some of you, but I feel like we could have found some greater economies in some areas, and we failed to capture those given the opportunity. And, you know, again, we talk about how our tax levy is so low and how we've lowered taxes so much, but we've still done it on the backs of reserves, which I support in doing that because I don't like raising the levy. But this day of reckoning is coming, and it's going to come fiscal year 18.
And this budget is really set in stone because you amended several times before.
I hope we amend it more revenues and less spending. I hope that's the case.
Well, that'd be nice, but it isn't going to happen.
You're not going to hold your breath?
No.
Well, I would bet against that, Virginia.
Me too.
I'll take your bet right now.
Well.
But you already spent money this.
No, I'll take a bet of that. We will increase the revenues in this budget.
We do have a track record, and it's quite clear, of overbudgeting and coming in under budget. That's our track record.
And it's just a lot of little things that add up here and there. And I've, we've looked at some same charts, Virginia, that show that quite clearly. And as far as budget amendments, the only way to totally avoid budget amendments is to overbudget everything.
And come out under.
And that's not right. That's not right. I would rather cut it a little closer and have to do a little amendment every once in a while.
I would agree with that.
Do you want to wager?
That's right.
You want to wager on that increase in revenue?
Gene, call 1-800-bets off.
Well, I know for sure, Courtney, I told you there's going to be an increase in revenues. And I seen somebody smiling across the hallway too, so.
Why open it in there? Do you know already?
It wasn't approved at that time yet.
Okay, any other comment?
It went out the levy.
No, it wouldn't change the revenue.
Yeah, the revenues. Anybody else have any comments, Gene? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing if there are no other comments. With that, we're in order for a motion to approve the fiscal 16 year budget.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is a resolution.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yeah, we have to go down to resolution number six. Excuse me. Okay, we'll go down to, number six is the resolution. Roll call.
Dancer?
Yes.
Dear Marty?
Ne.
Chapler?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. So here is the resolution, and I have a flag on here, Marty, where you need to sign up.
At least it's in the can.
There's a lot of hurdles to go through before we get done.
Yeah. Always has been, always will be.
Yep. Talk about taxing. The hurdles are more taxing than the levy is.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to the next item, number seven, secondary roads. Dave?
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
Yep, that's fine.
Close up with that.
That's fine. Gee, wish you had something for us today.
I could save up.
Come back next week.
I could.
You had limestone in already? I think I saw.
We already did limestone down.
Thought I saw a couple.
Between the crushed concrete, the gravel pile that they hauled in, and the limestone, there's a lot of material out there.
Have they started Arcadia yet?
They have, yeah. I think maybe they'll finish today. Might be a day to go over there and look and see. It's kind of nasty outside, so I might have to.
Are you going back after you get done?
You having any frost bubbles reported?
Oh, nothing yet. The pavements are kind of doing some funny things, so individual spots that they do it, they're getting a little more exaggerated than Alan was talking about at this point.
And one north of Farmers?
That one asphalt road I noticed is doing well.
And that's not usual.
On Noble?
There's one north, that one north of Willie's starting to surface a little bit. You can see the frost coming out.
I wonder if you'll fast over that one?
Well, I was probably going 60, 65.
How much?
50.
55?
Yeah, you were going 55.
In Dave's budget, I see they used their spinometers because they had bought some new ones.
We did buy a new spinometer.
I see you had to buy a new spinometer.
That's going to confuse me on the mileage.
Yeah, I thought, why would they buy a spinometer the way they watch him? Whatever.
Maybe paved it out. No. I've got the box culvert plans or the beginning of the box culvert plans, all the ones out on Old 30. There's four of them on Old 30. And I told Courtney what to put on the agenda, but I set letting date for box culvert projects. And I guess really I'm asking you to approve the plans too. Along with that letting date. I think I just passed the whole thing. Nice set of plans and different color. Here's the New Area photos. There's three of them going on one spot.
This is the first mile.
First mile out on Old 30 there. And shows some of the bridges that we have along the way. There's a curved one.
And this is what, about another half mile west of here?
Well, yeah, roughly half mile, yeah. And that next mile there.
It's not curved like that now, though.
No, it's a bridge right now.
Yeah, okay. All right, okay.
So you're going to change that stream just.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I would say that's not a curve at this point.
We'll put probably a metal culvert in there to catch the ditch water and it gets through there. Had to buy a little dab of right away on this one.
It's a tight one.
On the other one, that one not much. This one's going over. There's the right over line that's going over the right over line. That's the third curved one that we've done. We've done two of those.
There's one down by North Erie Green School.
Yeah. And that one's pretty similar.
So that's a bridge right now?
It's a bridge right now, yeah. So we're getting rid of three bridges.
It's a cement bridge.
Cement bridge. Those are probably 1920s bridges. Two of the bridges are posted. One's posted real low, and one's just a small culvert that we're putting. It's pretty narrow on Old 30 right now. I worked up an estimate on it, and I don't know if I want to call this my final estimate. I want to get a little bit more data on this pricing data from the suppliers. We've got some sizes that.
Historic bridge?
I just don't have what the material costs are. I think I'm close. It comes right out and just right into half a million dollars, 500,000.
This one where those cattle panels are all set aside.
Yes, all over here.
We'll work on that one. That one with curves a little bit is for that one.
Yeah, you know, and I don't believe, I don't know that I could accurately say how much more it costs. They leave the one side the same, and then they build up the other side so that they can use their standard forms they have and make every one of them the same increment as far as deflection. And it seems to work out real good. The one we did about, we probably have a great schoolhouse.
So you don't anticipate, since that culvert's coming at an angle, that washing away the bank work comes on through?
Haven't had any troubles like that. No, they get tied through and they got the curtain all on the end.
Where's this? Where are we at now?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
On Old 30. Kitty Hawk, just past the Jade.
It just takes more earthwork to get everything funneled in.
Yeah, it's, you know, and each section's the same, so they increment the same amount of deflection on the way around. And they're just making duplicates on the same line each time, so it's not a big deal manufacturing it.
Probably the longest time on that trip of this project has been making your own.
Probably.
You just get that taken away? They're pretty bad, so.
Yeah, they're pretty old. They're nearly 100 years old.
So they're coming apart pretty easily.
Pretty easy, yeah. If we hit the one contractor that we've had a number of times in the past, it's usually a day and a half structure, maybe two days to get the structure in. Get another contractor that we had, it was equally as good, but he took like a week and a half. Was very particular and did a good job. Those are probably the two extremes. Or working days in there, which is a plenty.
How long?
Forty. And leaving it where if they wanted to start in September and assume all the working days, they'd finish it up in November so that the whole contract period would be open to them. They could start soon as after we let it, or they could wait longer. So hopefully they get their best price. That's kind of the intent that's in the contract for it.
Have it done, hopefully have it done prior to harvest.
Hopefully, yeah. They're never guaranteed.
Yeah. That intersection going to be shut down that whole time then?
I think there's a pretty good chance of it being shut down for a while, yeah.
Those two, they'll probably do them pretty much in one same time.
Yeah, you know, they may go and do that.
I think they would probably have to move the crane.
Yeah.
Two of them.
We haven't done one like this yet with that close proximity, but I guess there's a place for everything.
No concerns over historic value?
Oh, maybe a little. 30 is kind of, if there were federal funds, there would be concerns, but yeah, it's just one of those things. It's not much to rehab there. Time for them to go.
Okay, but no legal or authoritative?
No, I, anytime that really comes into play is one reason for everybody.
Okay.
There won't be any bridge rails or anything involved with this?
Just a little parapet wall, a foot high, parapet wall on the box culvert.
Yep.
Between Paul and Darren, they put it together.
So you need approval of the plans?
Plans and to set a letting date.
Is that a whole on motion or separate?
We didn't have a plan on there. It doesn't matter.
I was kind of thinking about April 6th at 10 a.m. for letting date. Need to get some signatures on them, so I suppose we can approve the plans.
Why don't we just amend the agenda first to get the words plans on there?
Approve plans?
Also move the, amend agenda, add plans.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to add approved plans for the box culvert letting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same saying. Motion carries. Okay, now we'll run a motion to set the letting date for, or no, we got to approve the plans. We have to approve the plans first. Need a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Gene made a motion to approve plans. Gene seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same saying. Motion carries. Now we'll have a motion to approve the letting date for the box culvert project for April 6th at 10 a.m. Need a motion to that effect.
And I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve the letting date for April 6th at 10 o'clock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same saying. Motion carries.
We can sign these in any color we want since it's a local job. I signed mine in blue. I thought it'd be really pretty. Just put it instead of black. One, one looks a little bit, it's got that open side rail with the gaps in between that one looks a little bit more distorted than the rest.
Take that, utility permit?
Not sure if they're gonna get out here and do this during this time. This is for wind stream. They've got to replace a hundred foot effective cable near a hundred and ninetieth and Robin Avenue or Liddell. There's a, there's a map in there, it's just south, south of Lidd, Liddledale. Let's see, where they put the timber, then the one in the ditch and there's the temporary lumber out, so it's a pretty, pretty small thing. I've got, I've got three copies here. Probably two of those, one's just for our records.
What are they gonna do, they got, how much they gonna move?
Hundred feet of defective.
Any other questions or comments on the utility permit? If not, we're in order for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the utility permit.
Need a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve the utility permit, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. So one of these, that's original or doesn't it make any difference?
Go ahead and sign both, yeah. They both came over email, I think. More and more, the same two all the time, so we just print them off like pockets.
Yeah, I stopped in there too, yeah.
That's impressive, isn't it?
Yeah, they ran right through there, it's amazing.
Al told me this morning that he talked and we haven't got the bill yet, but I think we've got twelve thousand tons in the one pile. We've got five thousand tons from the city down there at the Arm of Billings, so seventeen thousand tons there. I think we've got around four at the shop and I'm guessing around three or four that we get out of Arcadia too. So it's five dollars and twenty-five cents, it's off the original to the price. Next thing I've got is these federal aid agreements. This is standard federal aid agreement that we do for bridge replacement projects. This is on what I guess I call the Bruni Bridge, Bridge I five, we're in Richland Township. Looks like it's map, but it's It's a hundred foot by thirty foot slab, we're estimating it'll cost three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We use the federal aid money. Contribution to that, which would be roughly two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. At the end of, or the beginning of the next federal fiscal year, we'll be at around a five hundred and fourteen thousand dollar balance in there. Got to keep that money spent and so use it, use it. This is, a lot of traffic on this bridge, it's a pretty good candidate as far as bridge candidate. We're gonna put in two box culverts, which are rather small federal aid candidates, but since we're running out of good eligible candidates of any size, we're gonna put those in to the tip next year, take them out, out with local money. We're gonna spend a little money on them, we're gonna spend federal aid on them. And then we're that Honda's bridge that we talked about four years, we're gonna start surveying that and get that in.
So you replace this bridge with two more culverts?
This bridge will be a hundred foot by thirty foot slab. It's, it's actually a pretty, pretty good sized bridge. We counted the traffic on it, we looked at the DOT and our, our dependent traffic count. Jive with what the DOT said, it does, it's got over twenty-five vehicles. Which we have one in the Bay Road, we're running out of the Bay Road.
Dean, what are the, just off, what are the concerns with these huge newer spreaders now that are?
Right here.
Eighty thousand pounds going over these box culverts.
The newer bridges I wouldn't say they're made for, but they're really made strong. And the box culverts are made off of strong, they use, they use a loading called HL ninety-three, which is just, they always used to use HS twenty and this is another big step. Legally, those newer spreaders shouldn't even go over the bridge. They're, they should get a permit to see if we would allow them to go over the bridge. It's actually illegal for most loading newer spreaders to be on them. They're breaking the law, they're going on the roads and the bridge is a different story, but they do it anyway.
Sure. They need a permit to do that?
They would need a do a permit to do it legally, but I haven't written one yet.
You haven't written one yet? How much is that permit?
Well, it's ten dollars, it'll be twenty-five dollars, actually it'll be twenty-five dollars now, but since it's not a bill.
Dave, back on this, is that eighty-twenty in federal aid?
It is, yes. So that'd be what, about six to six thousand?
Yeah, that's fine. I think I ask that every time we do one, but.
So what was the total cost on that one, Dave?
Three thirty is what we got for an estimate. This is, we're thinking about December letting with this, just getting it in the path for development and be in the next federal fiscal year and be in the next stiff, the transportation plan. But you kind of got to get your ducks ahead of time with these, they're not like these culverts, they're a lot similar to these. It's long, he's probably gonna read it.
Good day material.
You read these scares, yeah. At any rate, any approval or?
Your motion's approved. Questions or comments, if not, we need a motion to approve to move forward with the federal aid bridge project?
I'll move to approve the federal aid agreement for the bridge project. Dave will have to give you the number.
ROS C zero one four parentheses one fifty-three dash dash AJ dash fourteen.
That's the motion.
Got that, Bernie? Need a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the federal aid agreement for bridge project? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Need to do two copies of this, this needs to be signed by the supervisor, supervisor, county auditor.
Interesting call, we can get a lower interest rate.
On your credit cards.
Should I just proceed ahead, Marty?
Yeah, go ahead.
I had an employee the other day ask me if he could use his clothing allowance to buy a headset for his cellphone. It's like we use the cellphones quite a bit anymore even. We call the guys who've got all their cellphones on there some more. So we do call them and a number of the guys have gotten those headsets because the C D L requires a hands-free operation. And I said, I didn't know because that's one thing that's not on the list. A while back, we amended the list that says employees may be allowed up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year to use score and purchase coveralls, coverall jackets, safety footwear, gloves, jeans, uniforms, ANZI class two, safety wear, t-shirts and jackets, so that is our current list that we amended a while back.
I feel like jumping from clothing to equipment, if they should have that part of their job, I don't think it should be part of their clothing allowance, but it should be county property. If they're doing county business, if it's for their own cellphone, I don't feel it's the public service.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're using our cellphones to call their old cellphones, their private cellphones. If, if they, they should actually pull over if they get a call or stop by the side of the road and answer it or not, not answer it. I called a fellow the other day who was driving a truck, it was a contractor, I called him. And I'm on the road right now, I should really pull over and talk to him, so I made the conversation, went short, he picked it up and he was nervous about doing it. But that seems to be the way of doing it and I think there are different counties, there's a lot of different policies with cellphones and whatnot. I know I don't have the authority to tell them they can buy this, I mean, I don't know. I know there's, there's some already that have it, but they, they've paid for it themselves, yes.
They're required to have a cellphone?
Are they required to have a cellphone? They all do.
I assume they do.
They all do and they all furnish us with their number, we, we use it to call them. I think in a way, they're nice. Most of them, you know, they're rather say, you know, are doing this or, you know, say it over the bad, they're having broadcasts over the radios.
How many trucks have radios in?
That's what everybody's got to use.
That's another option too, if it's county business, it could be, you'd have the truck radio as well.
Yeah, it's just, as the cellphones have come in, the radio use has just dropped.
It's too convenient.
Too convenient, if we, and, you know, if, if you want to say something or if you have to say something about, you know, Joe Blow just pushing a bunch of snow on the road, if you want to mention Joe Blow's name, they're certainly not gonna broadcast that over the radio, you know, it's nice when you go look the guy up or call him and, and people broadcasting anything like that. So it's good for that, but it's bad that you, you don't know where they are, you don't have the field for what's going on. You used to be able to listen to the radio and you could kind of just tell where people were, they were having trouble. And the radio's getting used quite a bit during the snow. Which is nice because it does give you an idea where they're at. The cellphones, they're kind of the next blessing in a way.
Yeah, I've got real mixed emotions about cellphone use. I mean, I mean, it's, we just see that, you know, when you see employees on the cellphone, you don't know if it's actually for, you know, county use and for personal use, it's really hard to decipher and it's no different than, you know, personal access to a public computer, you know, that, that type of thing too. It's a slippery slope, I need to think about it a little bit.
I would never
Well, we still have that issue with this clothing allowance, we still need to address next session too. That has to do more with boots, I think.
We need to add this, you know, there is some safety gear in there and if, I suppose from a loose, loose mind of thoughts, you could say, well, yeah, this is for safety. You know, you could use, you could use your cellphone, you could call them off the road, blah, blah, you know. I know there's one maintainer man I can think of, I'll call him on it and, and tell him, because I'm just as guilty as rest, I'll call him on their cellphone and I have to call him on the radio, yeah, because it's very convenient, I'll call him and tell him. What I have to tell him, he answers right away because all he has to do is hit that button, he's got one of these craters that's
Sure he does.
He's gotta have both hands on the controls at all times, I don't, I don't know.
Part of my attitude stems from the purchase of safety glasses and coveralls towards the end of someone's day of, last day of employment.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to do something that would further promote the use of cellphones, that's, that's my underlying concern.
Yeah, that
I'd rather see reduced use of cellphones quite personally.
Well, I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, I wouldn't
And, and I just want to be upfront that it's a little different situation, but it's affecting my attitude here.
I wouldn't want to encourage the use of cellphones either by buying a headset. One of the big problems that we've run into is if you have to make a call, even if you have a headset, you have still, you, you still have to make the call if you have to do it. You don't want to encourage, you know, just because they have a headset, it doesn't completely eliminate the
The issue.
The issue, so, yeah, they have to pull over and so.
Amy, you have a question?
In a way, I mean, I have a headset or for myself and if you have it in the right mode or right, all you have to do is hit that button or whatever and say, call so and so.
Sure.
And it will, it will do it, you don't have to look at the phone too.
Employees command.
Yeah.
But not everybody's gonna do that.
Or, you know, again, it, you know, again, we're, if I knew it was just for county use, you know, call the shop. But call mom, call wifey, call kids, call brother, call broker.
My concern is I've seen people on, they're going to, they're driving, they're talking. How much are you really watching the road? You know, if you're involved in the conversation, that's just another distraction.
I need to think about it a little bit.
I guess, I guess as far as price of a headset, what's a headset run roughly?
About ninety dollars.
Yeah, a hundred bucks.
Very good one. As I was gonna say, it might be something that we put in the budget and then after they leave, they have to turn it back in, but, you know, it's something I might want to think about, so.
This wouldn't, this wouldn't be any extra cost, they'd just, instead of getting a pair of boots, they'd be getting a headset.
Right, yeah, that's correct.
And there are those that are already on a headset, they could
Are you allowed to use hands-free when you're driving yours?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Only if the boss calls.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah, we have to have headsets. And then, but also I have a cradle for the phone that's right next to me so that if I have to make a, have to do anything with the phone, it's right there, so I don't, you know, I can do this, but I don't take my hands off the wheel. I just wouldn't encourage it.
Reservation, like Courtney said, it's another distraction.
Yes, it is.
The boss is calling and that's how you communicate, I understand that too.
They just got a truck radio too.
Yeah, we have.
The only thing is, truck radio, you do have to
Yeah, the truck radio's kind of
Probably, probably even worse than
Kind of the same.
Than the cellphone, I mean, with the headset.
Reaching over to grab the mic and whatnot, dogging away on that.
And you got one hand on the wheel and
One hand on the wheel, so it's, it might even be better to have a cellphone in that case. The good thing about the truck radio is it gives you kind of a pulse of what's going on. A lot of these people are going to the automatic vehicle location with GPS to
Yeah, I was wondering, do you have any, do you know where they're at by that, can you locate them at all?
You can, there's a lot of people doing it and I, I, it'll probably get pretty affordable as time goes on.
Okay, but you don't have that capability now?
No. I think with our new software, the new one-one software and combining some hardware, I think that can be done. that can be done. I'm looking into it. Big Brother's gonna be watching and...
You know, as time goes on, you look at the cars, we don't even need drivers anymore.
All we need is buyers.
Well, I think I got my answer.
Let's think about it for a week.
I'm okay to think about it, I'm not, definitely not ready to give it a green light, but I just, I don't know, I just see, as we just continue to move forward in encouraging cellphone use, it's just slippery slope for me.
It's kind of an odd account to buy it out of in a way, though I suppose you could tie it to safety.
Any other discussion on it? We'll bring it back next Monday.
We'll bring it back next week.
That's fine.
But our next, the road tour discussion, Dave?
Does anybody want to go on a road tour?
It's time for one again.
Maybe set a, set a time, you know, we could maybe have some, some talk about the road use tax money, where, where we might want to stand that in construction.
We can go do the road tour, but as far as the discussion, I would just seem to do it here.
But as far as actually...
Sure.
Looking at projects.
Yeah.
What do we have on the agenda for next Monday, Courtney?
The ambulance.
We got the ambulance.
I got something else I want to bring up. And that won't take long.
You know, weather's supposed to be nice through all this week and...
End of Monday, it's supposed to still be nice.
Get a gun before everybody gets busy.
How long do you want? Oh, about as long as I can stand it in the cond...
Does the air conditioning work in it?
Well, I don't know if it works. This probably has that nice aura about it that it did before.
Driver sheets.
Might have to get it in the shop this week, maybe.
May sixteenth, or March sixteenth is next Monday?
Yeah.
I don't have it. Couple of things we decided to do today.
Do it next Monday?
Should have plenty of time.
Sounds good. Well, Dave's here, I know we talked about the road use tax money at our meeting last week and we thought it'd be nice to kind of earmark that for different things, or at least in the future, after we spend some, but be able to answer people if they ask what happened to that road use tax money, the extra 10 cents. And Dave did an excellent job. He, I emailed him, I think, late Tuesday night and by Wednesday morning, he was on the phone and had emailed me back and had a discussion about that. So it's, it's, it's gonna happen. I think we're gonna be able to, you know, three years from now, somebody says, "What happened to that extra 10 cents you got?" We'll be able to say, "Well, right here's what we..."
Anything else for Dave?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, with that, we'll go back to our broker RFP discussion.
Where was I? I think I finished by saying, thanks, Dave. I think I finished by saying, you know, isn't, isn't RFP even necessary? You know, what the other option we could do is we could just, you know, invite two of these brokers or more to come in and give us a 20-minute dissertation on their wares. And we now found out that next Monday would not be a good Monday to do it. So now that puts that two weeks off. But, you know, isn't RFP, if you feel that perhaps the, the RFP might be proved cumbersome, we could just do that, you know, and...
Well, I think we need some type of written documentation when we hire somebody so that we know what they're being held accountable to do for, you know, that type of thing.
I would suggest that in their proposal, that they pass that around. I'm not saying no RFP here, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, we could request that when we set the appointment, they say, "We're gonna want a written proposal and we're interested in shopping rates and pretty much shopping rates only."
I think we could get a better proposal if we explained to them that's about all we're interested in as opposed to, I know they're gonna want to sell, upsell us on a lot of their HR products. I'm not interested at this time in buying anything else there.
I'd have no problem with just having a 20-minute presentation and giving them a proposal.
With our small agenda, I don't know why we should not let it, somebody come in next Monday, is it? I think it'd be appropriate to have them come in.
If you can line it up, if you can, in that kind of a notice, have somebody...
I, I mean, see, if somebody could come ready next Monday, I think we could fit them in in front of a road tour.
Yeah, because we don't have a lot...
We don't want them to talk for an hour anyhow.
Give a 20-minute, half-hour proposal?
And, and I guess one other thing is a written proposal or do, do we want them to come in here and talk to us? I can see advantages and disadvantages of both of them, actually. I would kind of tell them that we'd like their written proposal, tell them what we want, and if they'd like to meet with us, they're welcome to. Give them that option. I, I can see where somebody from Des Moines is gonna say, "Well, I got a really good written proposal, I don't know what else I'd tell you if I came on Monday morning other than try to look professional."
Try to sell it.
Whoever does, they're gonna want to present.
We have a bit of one right here, but that's certainly not what we're asking for. This is just a little bit more, you know, why choose them? So, I mean, it, I guess what we'd only be asking for is just a written and verbal proposal on being our broker to, with the intent to shop rates and find economies. Thoughts?
Well, probably the biggest, or go ahead.
The interesting thing that I thought was the partial funding. Would they come up with that or is that a decision that we wouldn't make if we decided to do something like that or?
That would be, that would be, you know, we're asking them to explore all options to reduce our costs and I would think that that would be their job, you know, to at least suggest that, you know, no different than suggesting a PPO which has been done in the past, or HMO, sorry.
There's been a lot of talk about having a third-party provider where they're gonna shop, they'll shop our rates, they shop our rates. We're, they get a high deductible, and then the third-party buys it down. That's been talked about.
Yeah.
But to me, it seems like there'd be more fees. You get another person involved, it seems like you're... But I've heard from different people, there's a lot of savings in that.
Well, that's the bottom line, is the savings.
If you had more administration, you'd get more savings.
You know, the least people involved, you think the better, but...
Yeah.
Because the biggest thing they're gonna want is basically what our track record is from past, how many employees, if we can give them that information, that gives them a place to start.
One of them has already asked for that.
Well, I mean, if we, we, it's gonna cost us, that's the bottom line.
Well, I'm gonna be in Des Moines at ISAC this, this week and I'm gonna ask around about that, about insurance with different...
Well, I have no objection to someone coming in this Monday if it's pushing it too fast for them and us, that's fine, we can wait another week. I just wouldn't exclude this Monday if somebody wants to get rolling on it.
Do you want to direct me to do so and just be in touch with the two? And I'll gladly do that. And nine o'clock is pretty much when we're gonna ask them to be here or shortly thereafter. I mean, maybe we could do Pat at nine o'clock and...
Do they say nine fifteen?
And revisit Dave's thing at nine fifteen and then shortly thereafter, but...
So if we get on the road tour by ten, ten-thirty, that should give us time.
Still?
I can talk to Dave more about what he's got in mind for the tour. Get an idea of it.
When they start asking for, you know, specifics or plan details or a number of belly buttons, I mean, I think I've got that all in here, but if I need you, I'll be copying you.
Yeah, you know that our plans are on, if you believe, are on the county website, too. You have, do you have copies of that? Those are on there. I'd say the best ones will...
Yeah, okay.
Both of the current plans.
But I can't make them available to that, can I?
But you could, you could click on that and email those.
Oh, the link?
Because they're PDFs.
Okay, all right.
I mean, if they're asking.
I just don't access that portal, so, but, yeah.
There's a lot of information.
Okay. I will do so.
Any other discussion regarding the...
Yeah, is there anything else? I mean, is there anything I'm just not thinking of? I certainly want to enlist all of your favor to help guide me to this.
I don't have anything, but I thank you for, for doing this. Absolutely, great job.
I just haven't done anything yet. Running on a treadmill, sweat a lot.
Okay, enough now, so we'll go down to committee reports. Neil, can you start off?
Sure, me glad to. Okay, Monday afternoon, Mark and I had a meeting over at Case Management, the Advisory Board. Angela went over their accreditation that they got at the end of October, and I think we've gone over this before, they got 100% accreditation, so they're accredited for three years, and they went into some of the details of that because not everybody on that board had heard those results yet. They talked about the ID waiver waiting list, which I visited about. There are three people in the county or who would be on that list, but they don't know if they qualify yet for such services, they're just waiting to find out. And these are some of the people that DHS has put on their waiting list and they kind of want the region to handle it, we aren't at this time, and Case Management would get involved if they would decide to so do it. They talked about an SIS assessment, it's a support intensity scale. What they do is they interview some of their clients and they basically find or sign a numerical value to a whole bunch of different, I guess you'd call them qualitative questions that they ask, and the numerical number kind of comes up with how much funding they would be able to get for such mental health people. Then they talked a little bit about some of our case management goals and asked if they needed anything else on agency training and reviewed the caseload, had caseload updates. Mark may have more to say on that as well. Tuesday, I guess I just mentioned this, we had talked about the gas tax and like I said, I would contact Dave and I did, and I sent him an email explaining that I think we should be accountable for our gas tax money. And he replied and actually pointed me into the law where it said that we're required to use it for critical road and bridge construction projects that significantly extend the life of such assets, and he's all on board and keeping track of that. Also on Tuesday, I thought I would have gotten that done Monday by dint, on Tuesday, I sent a letter to Jamie Cashman and that concerned the funding of the region and how the per capita cap would be set at the $19.96 cap for certain counties and how I thought that should be abolished. And I think I sent that and you've each got, received a copy of that letter. I didn't, have not heard back from Jamie on any of those comments. Okay, Friday, okay, Wednesday, I had a long discussion with Sherry Kit. They have submitted a request into Rolling Hills for, and I know Prairie or Plains area has also entered, put in a proposal for the Critical Care Unit. And we're gonna look at them on Tuesday, tomorrow, at our meeting, we have a meeting tomorrow. Then on Friday, I visited with a county employee that works with a lot of our clients and they were, kind of had a few comments about Plains. I know when we paid Plains a lot of money in our contract to get them into Carroll County, they didn't want to locate at the site of the clubhouse. They thought it was not professional, they thought it'd be more professional, have their own separate location, and thus, when we did the block grant, we afforded them the opportunity to be at the Frecky Building, which was a very good location for them. Ironically, when they moved to the Luke Building, they moved the clubhouse there as well. So now they're adjacent to the clubhouse, and that was kind of news to me, but apparently they're closing, or have closed the clubhouse on thirty. And the biggest complaint by this person who works with these individuals all the time is they think it is really bad for the clients. The location was absolutely perfect. The new location down on Maple Street is a long ways from where they live, it's not accessible or very convenient. And had some big issues with that relocation of the clubhouse. So, anyhow, that's sort of what that discussion was about on Friday, and it was kind of a late notice thing where I actually got an email in the morning and didn't check any emails the afternoon, but was able to meet with her in the afternoon. So, I guess that concludes my week, mostly just a lot of communication with people.
Had a very busy week, not much for the county. I did Friday go to the retirement for Kayla and...
Cartwright?
Kayla. Or Cartwright, yeah. One of the things I was busy with some people down there, and first question, what's happening on the cell tower?
I haven't heard Google on that, I need to follow up on that.
Well, evidently they're contacting some people, John, whatever.
I haven't heard a word.
I haven't heard anything.
The ball's in their court, as far as I can see.
Yeah, because we sent that on.
We're never supposed to send back formal...
A proposal?
Yes.
Yep.
We haven't approved anything.
No, we just approved allowing them to give us a proposal, kind of.
Yeah, absolutely right. Yeah, because we were talking about the fee or if we're gonna, there's an additional charge, I haven't heard anything. I'll follow up with that.
Okay.
Get a hold of Jackie.
The other thing that was brought up was the courthouse, courtroom remodel, what they're talking about during?
I tried, I left a message with John last week and I haven't heard anything back from him last week, but I'll follow up with that.
Those were the conversations that were made to me, so, on that, discussions with constituents, that's about all I had all this week.
Dean?
I had a Conservation Board meeting on Monday night. The FFA kits were there with their leader and talked about the farming of the Tegus property. And there was concern about the conservation practices used on that as far as the board is concerned, to have them do, since it is a conservation piece of property, to be more, use more conservation practices, which is a good idea. The Salk Rail Trail Association was there and they were, their, their primary reason was for to, the lifetime pass for the Salk Rail Trail. They wanted to, and I think it was actually to move it or to have a 200, $350 pass, lifetime pass, and if you already have a single lifetime pass, you, and which would be two, a single would be a $250 pass, you could increase it by giving another $100. They were also wondering about when they sell these passes, when the association sells them, it has to go through the county, and they wanted to use a PayPal account because it would just be a lot quicker that way. The only thing is, there was a, there's a charge for that. I think seven, $7 for a, basically was gonna be the charge to use the PayPal account. And I said, "Well, I don't think, I think when you guys," and this is, you know, Courtney can...
Yeah, I talked to Jason.
You talked to Jason about that. I think, you know, that's $7... I think, you know, that $7 has to come from you guys someplace, because when the money comes to us, you got a $350 charge for the account or for the pass. It has, we have to have $350. I mean, plain and simple. Is that kind of the way you?
Well, he explained it to me that the association would set up a PayPal account, and they would forward the money to the county.
Right.
And they would pay the fee.
And they would pay the fee.
So county would.
Right.
Not be, the county doesn't have to do a PayPal account. The county's just going to be getting the money instead of getting it from Jason with the check, he's going to be getting it, a check from the association.
Right. So I think there was, you know, a little, it was unclear there. I said I, for auditing purposes, I think if the county sells a $350 pass, they should need to get $350 back, you know? I mean, so. I have concession stand, if anybody wants to look at the concession stand report from 2000. I can pass this around from 2013 and 14. I think the discussion there was, you know, I think it makes it, it pays, you know, it pays for itself as far as the products that they sell. It's hard to cover the person being there. So I think they feel that it's a very good asset to the, if anybody wants to rent a boat, you know, go on the water, you know, on those nice days, it's hard to, how do you arrange that? How do you do that? It's nice, and they do get quite a bit of traffic. It helps for the campers that are there, and I think it's an, it's an asset to their camping experience out there to have those concession stands.
But it does lose money. It's just whether or not we got to view it as, you know, a capital enterprise or if it's just another service we're providing.
If they're going to have these boats and stuff, they've got to have somebody else there and then rent them, I suppose, or somebody.
Can't be the Rangers.
Did they talk about the idea of the camp host handling that? They always have a host there that's camped out, right, when you check in to do camping. They sell ice and a few other things.
I guess I was not aware of that.
That would be an option.
Ice and firewood.
You camp out there quite a bit, Gene?
I once, no.
Okay.
But yeah, they do sell firewood and ice if you need that value.
I think the concessions, Dan, would get you a hand as well by the campers if it was actually at the campsite.
I think so, too. I think when it was up there, I think they actually probably did better than they do.
Because we did it down there because of that.
And they converted that to a cabin, didn't they?
Yeah.
Yes, and they rent that out quite frequently. It's, that's worked out good, but.
Yeah.
I think if anybody wanted to run a private concession stand out there, they wouldn't want to do it out of the education center. They'd want it right next to the campsite.
So maybe in the future, there has to be some more discussion about that. Then we had the trail paving bid approval, and then there's IACCAB Spring Workshop this year. It's at, in Clinton, and it sounded like there wasn't going to be anybody going to that because of the distance.
On the trail approval, your board approved it, but has the DOT approved it yet?
Yes, yeah.
So we're good there?
Yes.
Good.
Yep. And I, let's see here. Attended the home-based, Home-Based Iowa, what do you call that, recognition by the governor.
Yeah, initiative.
Yeah, initiative in Fort Dodge on Friday, and I coupled it with a stop. I got ahold of Peg Stickrad from the, from the hazmat, Region 12, Region 5 hazmat up there, and so, because I couldn't attend the rescheduled meeting that they had because of the, so I touched base with her. I hadn't, you know, hadn't had anything to do with them yet, and so I think that was a good stop. You know, the governor was very, very good. I think it's a very good program. Those in attendance were Mayor Schweers and.
Shannon was there.
Shannon was there, and DMAC president here, I think, because they're in that program as well, helping veterans with education, with the educational part of it. It was, it was a good deal. I was very glad I went. Also with, in talking with Peg Stickrad from Region 5, they have formed a 503C Region 5 Foundation, mostly to help them get additional funding, and they requested a, somebody from our board be on that foundation board, so I would gladly do it, but we do have to have, let's see, and they need a copy of the Board of Supervisors reflecting that choice, so we'll have to bring it up.
With that on the agenda next week?
Next week, yeah.
Is that what you'd like to do?
Yeah, just go ahead and.
Make that appointment.
Because they'll probably run those meetings concurrent with them.
Right, yeah. So now it'll be three meetings instead of two. So other than that, that was my week.
Okay, Dean, Mark?
A pretty busy week. Neil mentioned on Monday, we had Case Management meeting. The only things that I would add to that is, as part of this accreditation, and I think, again, Neil had mentioned that we kind of covered this once before, but one of the suggestions that the state, their state auditor suggested was more involvement with the Advisory Board. And that's kind of tough, because no one knows their business better than they know their own business. Neil and I, you know, we would probably, you know, we're still on the learning curve with it, probably more so than anybody, and, you know, remember, we joined this, that board just to kind of make it gender balanced, and I'll take that to kind of the next thing here is too, is they're kind of having difficulty with attendance. There was more case management personnel there than there was advisory personnel at Monday's meeting, and so they're going to talk about maybe moving, this time slot is Mondays at 1:00 PM, and, you know, we thought that maybe we would move the time to make it more accommodating for consumers to be part of the case management or consumer guardians or advocates, but that might fly in the face of what it would do for providers, and again, there wasn't any providers there either. So we'll just have to see how that pans out. I think Neil and I are getting a better and more clear picture of, you know, what case management faces as a result of the membership on this, but we'll just have to see where it goes. And then also, I just, did you update everybody? I might have been half asleep, sorry. Daydreaming. We didn't give everybody a updated case management caseload?
I didn't give them.
Okay.
So they reviewed it.
Yeah, currently, we have 122 under Carroll County Case Management, fairly even distributed between the two case managers and then a slightly lesser load on the two case manager supervisors, so. That was on Monday. On Thursday, I addressed the Farm Bureau. The Farm Bureau called me, the Carroll County Farm Bureau called me last week, and they were, asked me to join their board meeting for March and just update them on county issues, and we talked about the budget. We talked about the paving projects, update, you know, the two unfinished projects in Roselle and Willie, and spent quite a little bit of time talking about legislative issues and impacts, and they're about ready to do their survey, annual survey, and they said if the supervisors would like any questions addressed, you know, in that survey, that they would welcome those questions. I didn't think of any, you know, right at this time, but if you have anything, I'd be glad to follow up with them, you know, on, on the board's behalf. And then on Friday, I'm going to need just a little bit of time and if you could, your attention on this, this is the Manning ambulance issue, where I've reported in the past that they are seeking an increase in their rent. It's a, looking at the big picture, the underlying cause for their request and their concerns is that they have a daytime paramedic down there that is soon to be retiring, and he, his primary charge has been to serve the daytime shift in Manning. And he's going to retire, he says, soon. I didn't give an exact date, but within a couple of years, he'd like to be able to do so. Given you plenty of notice, I'm not going to leave you high and dry, but they're having difficulty finding staff during the day primarily. It's not so much an issue at night. They believe, you know, again, this was, much of the discussion was centered around increasing the stipend, the rent. I wish we'd call that something different, to incentivize and encourage growth in that area, because take, for an example, a, someone who's gainfully employed in a day job, and if they have to take off work to respond to a call, and they're gone for a couple of hours or something like that, the employers, you know, some of them are good enough to allow for that, you know, no different than like a fire call or something like that, but they're also taking off of work, and they're, they're currently only being paid $14 per shift, and they're on call for 12-hour shifts, so that comes out as slightly more than, a little more than a dollar per hour. I'm going to bounce around. I don't know, I'm in the hierarchy of information here, I'm going to try and go in a logical order. It was attended by Ben Lorenzen, who is the new director down there. Ben's a sharp young man. I really liked him a lot. He called the meeting together also to discuss who's really responsible for what. When it comes to paying for something beyond the $1,400 per month stipend, and the service needs something, Ebola tape, who pays for that? Okay? Now, the city of Manning does contribute. They, they contribute, we pay about $16,800 per year, and the city of Manning pays an additional, they, they give 100% of the stipend to cover the shift, and then they also contribute an additional $4,800 per year for personnel, an additional $1,200 for supplies, and then they also cover $4,000 worth of tax and IPRs on this personnel. And again, 100% of the rent goes to them. Brita does it a little bit different. Coon does it a little bit different. They're all different, so it's, even though our expenditures are the same for everybody, how the cities manage it is certainly their, their call, but they all do it a little bit differently. They all have differing views on it. Ben was there, Don Roy, who's the city clerk, Harvey Dale's the mayor, Bob Gensen was there, as well as Pat Gray and Dr. Bob from the ambulance and as, of course, and as, as well as I was. Bob was very helpful, because Bob is not only a Manning resident, but Bob has a lot of tenure and understanding of how these satellites came about and what their purpose was, and he went on to explain that, yeah, there was some desire for communities to have a presence in their areas, but it was done primarily under Larry Crutchlow's direction, that we have geographic balance with units throughout the county. So we've got one in the northwest, the southwest, the southeast. We really don't have a presence in the northeast, but, you know, it's a little tough for, to ask somebody like Lanesboro or even Litterdale to do it. Glidden gets a ton of calls, but no presence over there. You know, this was discussed when we talked about law enforcement contract. So anyways, the idea was, is that the ambulance service would own the rigs and be responsible for the rigs, and the cities would be responsible for the personnel. Okay? And there were, last year, just to give you an idea of workload and demand, there were 67 calls in Manning in 2014. There were 100 in Coon, and there were 50 in Brita. Now, okay, 100, 100, 100 plus in Coon, 50 in Brita, and 67 in Manning. But Manning is on the increase, and, and markedly so, as the two-edged sword has occurred with the movement, the moving of the new hospital out to the corner of the, of the city, because the Manning Plaza generates most of the 911 calls. If there was an emergency with a resident there, generally, there's an RN on staff or very close by to the hospital right next door, they would respond to it without ever even making the 911 call in the first place. If they needed the 911 call, then it was still very convenient to just move there, and then if it required a transfer, it was down the hall. Well, now, it requires, you know, mobile transfers, so that's part of the problem. And then the other part of the problem is, is they're going to be building a, oh, the other thing is, is these transfers. We, you know, we extended an opportunity for them to receive the revenue off these transfers, like we do with two Carroll nursing homes and one Coon nursing home, because again, those transfers never would occur either, because if they were taken to the hospital, the transfer was just move them down the hall. Well, now, the transfer, which is essentially, if you understand this, this is a ride back. You know, the, the service is responsible for it to make that 911 call, but then when it's time to go back from the hospital to the plaza, we're providing this transfer service of which we get reimbursed through these local units, but for that, we've even offered them to have the additional income. That's still part of the problem. It's hung up with attorneys right now. Ben is going to try and further that cause to try and get at least that part of it settled, because we would essentially be granting them that additional revenue source to backfill some of their increase. And then, and then finally, they're adding an assisted living center out there by the high school, and they just know calls are going to go up there as well.
But a lot of their calls that they were getting were transports to helicopters, which is out of Quakerdale. Now, from the hospital, they do not have that space.
They don't have ambulance, they had an ambulance, there's a helipad out there.
There's a helipad, but they don't need to take the ambulance and get them.
Oh, okay, okay. So you don't think the transfers are going to be as much of an issue?
No, because every time an ambulance, a helicopter came in, they had to take an ambulance taken from the hospital, drive them out to.
Okay.
Now they don't have it.
Okay, but the long-distance transfers aren't nearly what they're concerned about. They're concerned about the transfers of the nursing home patients.
I know, but I mean, those, those were some transfers that they had.
Right.
That they won't have neither.
Okay. So what else? Pat had stated that if the county sees as much as that an increase, oh, the last increase was 2001, if that means anything. Remember, we just bumped up Brita a couple of years ago, but the last countywide one was, was in 2001. Pat had suggested if we do any increase, that the increase would be exactly 50/50, that the city of Manning would increase dollar for dollar what, because right now, it's not 50/50. You know, we could have that discussion whether or not we need to make that 50/50 before, but again, that, that's something that we need to visit about. We left it with, Pat was going to check, I'm sorry, Ben was going to check on the status of the contract with the attorneys, and then Pat was going to get Don some numbers put together, because part of this is putting some Manning councilmen into a better understanding of what it is exactly that the county is contributing to already, and how this illustration's going to come out is we know that it's very expensive to run these satellites in terms, particularly in terms of only 67 or 50 or even 100 calls, when, you know, we've got well over 1,000 calls just out of, you know, the main office here, but that's just for further evaluation. And then, I know I'm leaving something out here, but. And then, I know I'm leaving something out here, but, you know, my feelings on it, you know, were pretty well made clear that, that I put a lot of similarities to this issue with what we faced with the Glidden contract law. You know, they didn't feel that they were getting the best on their investment, but these, Manning could really understand the impact of what police departments cost, and, because they're investigating running their own ambulance service down there. And I said, "Careful what you wish for, because you're going to find that that's a very, very expensive hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar proposal just to buy a box." And then you got to, you know, do everything, yeah, yeah, everything else. So, the other thing was, is, is, to me, this sounds like more of an issue, I, just throwing more money at it, here I go making a fiscal, political comment, but time and time again, throwing more money at it doesn't solve the problem. I see this more as a volunteer issue. Look at what we're seeing throughout our communities. It's getting harder and harder and harder for people to sign up for T-ball umpiring, and for soccer coaches, and for rotary clubs, and for ditch cleanups, and firemen-
More particularly with this, because they've got to take training to up to those positions.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying it's a microcosm of, of what I truly believe is what goes on throughout all of our communities, is we're just having more difficult time getting people to step up. You, you're not getting paid at fourteen dollars per shift. And if you doubled it, it's twenty-eight dollars per shift. So this is an issue of volunteerism, more so than it is pay. Let's call it what it is. So, I, I'm not quite so sure, and then again, if you start throwing a lot more money at it, remember, this is all coming out of general fund, and we just covered it very clearly today, this is the, you know, the countywide levy. Are we, in a sense, by making an increase here, you know what's going to happen in the other two communities, and you're going to hear it from all of these other communities that are subsidizing the other community's service? So, it, it's, it's kind of a slippery slope. And I did, we talked right away about the budget being in the can today, so they didn't expect any action to be happening, or a budget amendment required for this. They know it's going to be an ongoing discussion, and we might not get it settled for a year. But it's, it's just something that they're, feel very strong about, and not willing to let go, and we'll talk a little bit about it more at the ambulance advisory board meeting tomorrow. Any questions? I'm sorry I rambled. But it just gives you a big picture.
Thank you.
Okay? And that was my week.
Okay. Just my week last week, I was working with Jerry Martin on the resolution for the off-road utility and altering vehicle, and she's supposed to be emailing me a copy of that resolution. Courtney did get one from Van Buren County, and I'll just pass that around. I've had several people approach me about passing or approaching this resolution. It's basically for using utility vehicles and altering vehicles on county roads, and basically blacktops. And that, that resolution kind of explains it. And then on Friday, when Chris Whittaker and Evan Blakely from Profford County and Garret Claus and I, we went down to the Highway 30 Coalition meeting, it was in Ames, and we met with Paul Trombino and Stuart Anderson, talked a little bit about the priorities, excuse me, on Highway 30. I'll just pass this list around. Those are six of the priorities. The one that I've got listed on the bottom, we're doing some checking there, that one, we don't know if it's in there, as far as, we got to go back on the minutes and, and check on that, but that could be a seventh one if we find it. Just the overall tone of the, of that meeting with Trombino and Stuart Anderson, there's a lot of, a lot of projects as far as expanding the four lane, and as far as the revenue to process these, this four-lane coalition, it's just, basically comes down to dollars and cents. And the other thing that we talked a little bit is about the engineering of the actual Highway 30 Coalition, or the Highway 30 four-lane project. It takes quite a bit of time. We usually, when it gets thrown into the hopper, it takes five to 10 years for that to kind of go through. The one concern that was brought up is also the need, and what we're going to try and do is start doing more on traffic counts on certain areas, on those six priority areas. In Highway 30, in 2016, they're looking at doing traffic counts in Carroll County, Green County, and Harrison County. They also talked a little bit about the Grand Junction, the overpass. They're going to be working on that project this summer. And it's going to be a 44-foot wide overpass, and the question was brought up, will, will that accommodate a four-lane traffic? And it will not. Basically, what they're looking at doing is putting two 12-foot lanes, and then two 10-foot on the outside of that. And so it would not accommodate actual four-lane if it did go through, and that was brought up, that maybe we need to look at putting an overpass in there that's four-lane as opposed to only 44 feet wide.
Where was that at?
The one just over east of Grand Junction, between that, or that-
Yeah.
Site there, and railroad overpass there. So that, that was kind of brought up. The other thing we talked a little bit about is the Highway 30 Day at the Capitol, which will be Wednesday, March 18th. They wanted us to come up with a theme for that, and the theme that we came up was, was thank you for working together, and that's in regards to passing the gas tax. On that day, we will be meeting with Representative Mark Smith, Senator Dix, Senator Groundstall, Representative Paulson, and we also want to try and get Debbie Durham there, as far as the economic factor brought in. So those are all things we want to kind of tie in as far as Highway 30, the meeting on the 18th. So, that's all I had for last week. Courtney?
Anything else?
Yeah, there's one more I should have mentioned, committee reports. I got contacted by a longtime colleague of mine, Jim Venner, and he's working quite informally right now with an entity that is looking at doing some bio gas project. Be a very good, or large development, wouldn't involve a lot of jobs, but be a major investment in the Carroll area. And he would like me or another member to meet with him the week of March 16th, when they have some of their people come around. And they don't know the exact date or time, but I just thought I'd mention that, that it's a possibility of another business coming into the Carroll community.
Shannon brought that to me up to Friday.
It's all pretty tentative, right now.
March 16th?
He said it's going to be the 16th, 18th, or 19th. That'd just be like an hour meeting, and they, they thought someone from the county supervisor should be there, and so he asked if I or one of us could be there. And I said, "Well, when we get the date, I'll, and a little more information, I'd be sure that one of us is there."
Sure.
This time you know.
Okay, anything else? Not, we're in order for a motion to adjourn.
So, so-
I guess any comments from those in attendance?
My motion still good?
Yep, still good. Motion, need a second?
Second, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Oop.